...City Councilman George Berich from the city of Kattati. Okay? Why do you resent that title so much? It's a title that I earned. I served this city with distinction. I've been talking about this for over a year, but for some reason you want to deviate from proper etiquette and refer to me as I have asked to be called "Councilman Berich." That aside, I want to bring to the public's attention about these housekeeping rules. For over a year, I've mentioned that at no time has this council or any other council ever deliberated, brought before the council or before the public any idea of housekeeping items or housekeeping rules. Unlike many other cities who have such rules, they have had them vetted before the public, they brought them before the public during the agenda, and they voted on them, and it's become a matter of policy. But I'd like to see a show of hands for the benefit of the audience if any of you discussed these housekeeping items between yourselves outside of these chambers. Have any of you discussed these housekeeping items during a public meeting? Please raise your hands. Let the record show that not one council member seems to know where these housekeeping rules came from, why they were put into effect, and what the purpose of them are. And it's absolutely outrageous. I've been talking about this for over a year. I've given you my phone number, email address, I've offered to have coffee with you, and I've begged you, without getting on my hands and knees, to do this the right way, put it on the agenda, bring it forth like any other responsible government has been able to do, and vote on it. But you are so intolerant of someone other than yourself coming up with an idea that is allowed by law and is applauded by the law. This is the only city that I can think of who acts in such an irresponsible way that you cannot even decide among yourselves which rules that you want the people to abide by and which ones you don't. So it begs the questions: Who's making up these items and these rules? Because you obviously aren't, our elected officials obviously aren't, must be city staff. Maybe it's your campaign donors in the room. Maybe they got together and put these rules together. The last thing I'd like to see is that my city council are a group of puppets bought and sold by members of the community or city staff. It obviously looks like the tail is wagging the dog here in Kattati. You've had every opportunity to do this the right way, and you're stubborn and you refuse to follow proper procedure. It's a stain on our town, and you will do this the right way one of these days. I have faith in you, but maybe you're just going to have to put your politics aside and your egos aside long enough to do it. Think about it. You have children in the room, you have taxpayers in the room, they deserve better. Thank you.
And thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to the housekeeping items?
Oh, I, uh, wait, I'm filling my...
Specifically on the housekeeping items? Okay. We're not at citizens' business yet. All right, well, seeing that there's no one else, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And, um, yeah, it's kind of interesting, these housekeeping items, because it's simply a matter of courtesy and politeness, and I didn't know that you are a puppet that's bought and sold if you want just courtesy and politeness in a public meeting, but I've been educated tonight. So we are on to announcements. The city of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday and Wednesday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park, Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, you can call the library at (584) 9121. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. For more information, you can contact them at (794) 0304. The Kattati Historical Society's sixth annual Old Fashioned Chicken Barbecue is this Sunday, April 13th, starting at noon. Tickets are available at the Exchange Bank or the Chamber of Commerce office. Flyers available here at City Hall, the Kattati Historical Society Museum, and on the city's website at kattatycity.org. Lastly, April has been declared Safe Digging Month in Kattati to encourage community safety in Kattati. The Dial 811 Call Before You Dig program provides an effective damage prevention service that protects Kattati citizens and the underground facilities at no cost to the caller. Now, we're on the part of the agenda where we have proclamations, and we actually have three proclamations here this evening, and I enlist the Vice Mayor in reading some of these, but I'll go ahead and take number one. Oh, I should do these in order, shouldn't I? That would be delightful, all right. So the first one on the agenda is April 6th through 12th, 2014, is the National Crime Victims Rights Week here in the city of Kattati. And is there someone in the -- if you could come up to the podium, I'm going to go ahead and read this, and then I'd like to open it up for comments, that would be great. Whereas more than 31 million Americans are directly harmed by crime each year, and each crime affects many more family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers; and whereas approximately 50% of violent crimes are never reported, and only a fraction of victims receive the help they need; and whereas the emotional, physical, psychological, and financial impact of crime falls on people of all ages and abilities and of all economic, racial, and social backgrounds; and whereas the nation has heated a call to action, beginning with the President's Task Force on Victims of Crime in 1982, for a more equitable and supportive response to victims, and has promoted victims' rights initiatives, effective and compassionate victim services, and just compensation and financial support; and whereas now is the time for new challenges, new solutions, through a comprehensive strategy for reaching and serving every victim of crime, especially traditionally underserved victims, such as those with disabilities and victims from diverse cultures; and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 6th through April 12th, 2014, provides an opportunity to explore the challenges and find the necessary solutions to assist every victim of crime in the United States, to help ensure their access to the help they deserve and the rights they are promised; and now therefore be it proclaimed on this eighth day of April 2014, the City Council of the city of Kattati does hereby proclaim April 6th through April 12th, 2014, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in the city of Kattati. And if you could introduce yourself for the audience.
Be happy to. Thank you. I am Gloria Yerodis, and the Director of Victim Services for the District Attorney's Office. I'm here this evening on behalf of DA Jill Ravitch in the full office, and to thank you for the opportunity for this proclamation and to raise awareness about victims of crime. One thing I've learned this last two weeks is our proclamation language is a little long, and I apologize. We will shorten that for next year. Too many "whereas's," I think. And the point is that in Sonoma County, we serve 3,000 victims a year. Anyone at any time in this city or any part of this county can become a victim. I wrote a letter to the editor in the Press Democrat today, I hope you saw that. It outlines exactly what we're doing tonight in every city in the county. We want to make sure that anyone who's a victim of crime at any time, or you suspect someone is, does get the services that they richly deserve and that they need to get through the process. When victims of crime, especially violent crime, are facing the criminal justice system or losses or trying to recover, be made whole again after the crime, it is a very painful time, and there are services at the DA's office and our many partners to serve them. So that's all we want to do tonight, is make sure you're aware of that. We give you our best wishes. It's nice to come to Kattati. We really welcome this opportunity, and we'll be back every April, because this is every year we are going to do this to make sure that my goal is every citizen in this county is aware that we're there.
Great. Thank you very much. Before you leave the podium, and I'll come down and get this to you, are there any comments or questions from council on this topic? Yes, please.
Well, having worked with you before, and I know how dedicated you are to this issue, I just wanted to thank you for your time and efforts. And I also think it's fantastic in this county that we have all of these services available in one location, so somebody can literally leave the courthouse, go across the street, and then get all of the counseling information, resources that are available, all in one place. So it makes it a lot easier for somebody who's already stressed out because of the situation that they're in. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you, and you understand, and congratulations on your city council membership.
There's just something about a flash going off with a camera that tells you the picture's been taken. Boy, with phones anymore, you just, you can't tell. All right, now we're going to go to proclaiming April 6th through 12th, 2014, the Week of the Young Child here in the city of Kattati, and Vice Mayor Skilman's going to read that.
Okay. Whereas the Child Care Planning Council of Sonoma County and other local organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 6th through the 12th, 2014. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, which provide a foundation of learning and are crucial to the growth and development of young children and to building better futures for everyone in Kattati, California. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, which provide a foundation of learning. And that's sounding repetitive. Okay. Whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to the young children's futures. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this eighth day of April 2014, the Mayor of the city of Kattati does hereby proclaim the Week of April 6th through April 12th, 2014, as Week of the Young Child in the city of Kattati. Signed by Mayor Delasso.
Excellent. Please.
Good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Stephen Solman. I'm a co-chair of the advocacy committee of the Child Care Planning Council for Sonoma County, and wanted to definitely come and say thank you very much for the recognition here on behalf of all of the people that work very hard in the community to provide childcare, education, and schooling for our youth here in Sonoma County. The Week of the Young Child is an annual celebration to focus public attention on the needs of young children and their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and services that meet those needs. The goal is to demonstrate and bring public attention to the importance of the profession of early care and education, to assist elected officials such as yourself to better understand the importance and thinking about children, childcare, and early education when you are making decisions, building infrastructure, and planning for new jobs and allocation of mottos, excuse me, allocation of funds. And our motto is "Parents earning and children learning." And part of some education, I was told that it might be appropriate to bring some packets of information. Hopefully I have enough for you. And this is information that we sent out to all of our different stakeholders in the community, and we heard from one just now, from the District Attorney's Office, the Public Defender's Office, CASA, probation, everyone that has a hand in making sure that our children are able to safely navigate from childhood into their adult years in a way that's beneficial for them and beneficial for this community and for all communities in Sonoma County. So I want to thank you very much for, again, the recognition of the work that's being done.
Excellent. Thank you. And it's photo op time again, so here we go. We're going to be a little bit more organized this time. Let's get down there. Okay, yeah, actually, I neglected, actually, to see if council had any questions or comments. Councilmember Moore, you had something?
Stephen, was it? With your advocacy for children, were you familiar with the, some of the proposed legislation that they were looking at in California regarding the education for the four-year-olds?
The Transitional Kindergarten, S-837, actually. Councilmember Harvey and I were part of a committee discussion just last Wednesday on what we're going to do to address the content of that.
Okay, so we're still looking to address that in the legislature?
Yes. It's definitely in sort of its infancy stages, but it's hopefully going to move through.
Right. I think it's just a key component in there, and, um, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Were there any other questions or comments from council members? No? All right. Again, thank you very much.
Just wanted to thank Stephen. Thank you for coming down here. He works very hard on the Child Care Planning Council, as do all of the members and volunteers. They really do a lot. It's really a learning experience for me, and it always amazes me, the passion that everyone puts into making sure that our children are taken care of. So thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. And right back at you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final proclamation of the evening is proclaiming April 2014, wow, 2014, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Kattati. And is there a representative from -- no. All right then, but Councilmember Harvey, you'd like to read that, please?
Proclamation of the City Council of the city of Kattati, proclaiming the month of April Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Kattati. Whereas in 2013, 1,880 reports of child abuse were serious enough to require a face-to-face investigation to determine if allegations of abuse were substantiated, and 195 children were removed from unsafe homes in Sonoma County. And whereas the Sonoma County Blue Ribbon Campaign, sponsored by Prevent Child Abuse Sonoma County and the California Parenting Institute, and will focus on educating all of us on the issues and magnitude of the problem. And whereas Sonoma County's Department of Human Services, the Sheriff's Department, and the District Attorney's Office have joined in recognizing and supporting the education, prevention, treatment, and need to cease all forms of child abuse. And whereas each year, public and private agencies throughout Sonoma County and the state of California sponsor child abuse prevention activities during the month of April to increase community awareness about the issues of child abuse. And whereas child abuse prevention and support will continue year-round, and whereas working together, we can make a difference for all the children in our city. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this eighth day of April 2014, the City Council of the city of Kattati does hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Kattati, signed by Mayor John Delasso.
All right. Thank you very much, and we will forward that on. Now we get to the best part of our meeting, which is the honorary mayor part, and we're looking for Morgan Nelson from Ranch Kattati High School. Come on up, tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we're going to grill you with all kinds of really tough questions in front of everybody.
Hi, I'm Morgan Nelson. Thank you for selecting me to be part of this. I'm really looking forward to it. I'm a sophomore at Rancho, and I've lived in Kattati since second grade. I have an older brother and a younger sister. I'm very interested in leadership. For the past two years at Rancho, I've been involved in student government, and I'm actually running for ASV president for next year. Elections were today. I'm really hoping that I get to be student party president, but I won't know until Friday. I play volleyball for Empire Volleyball Club, and this year I'm helping coach my little sister's spring league. I'm active in the California Scholarship Federation and other clubs at my school. I do a lot of community service, and this summer I'm getting to go to Mexico on a mission trip to build a house for a family in need, and I'm really looking forward to that. My goals for after high school are to attend UC San Diego and then graduate to law school to become a lawyer. Like a normal teenager, I keep myself busy with sports and school and friends, and yeah, that's a little bit about myself.
That's great. Well, thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments? I'll start maybe down at this end with Councilmember Landman.
Well, I'd be happy to. The problem is trying to pick what to ask you. I was just kind of amused at the end, Morgan, when you said, "Well, like a normal teenager, I keep busy with these other things," but you already listed so many things. So student government, you're evidently right in the middle of election season right now. And we're going to find out Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Definitely for that. I think it's really great to see somebody interested in that. It's probably a difficult field, and obviously, as you can see from reading the newspaper, we can use all the good people with good aims and good goals and who are willing to do the work as we can possibly get, so that's wonderful. So you mentioned going to law school, but where do you see after that? Do you have any idea of where you might wind up going? Any particular branch of the law, or perhaps more public service?
Um, I haven't thought that far ahead, but, yeah, I don't know. All I know is I want to be a lawyer. I haven't really looked into that as much as I should.
Well, it's certainly hard, too, to make a plan, you know, this young, and say, "This is exactly what's going to happen 10 years from now." But I think with all the good groundwork that you're doing with your schooling, your volunteerism, and a healthy social life, and sports, whatever direction you go, I think you'll do well. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Well, see, he picked the law school thing, and I'm the only attorney up here, so I thought I'd be talking about that. No, but I think it's fantastic that you've got a plan and that you're thinking ahead already that far at 15.
Yeah.
So, kudos to you. I didn't know till I was 23 that I was even interested in law school, so that's fantastic. You're already ahead of the curve. But I thought that's great. Not only are you involved in volleyball, but it sounds like you're coaching as well, and that's really great, because it's a way to kind of give back and get other kids just as excited as you are about the sport. And so I really think that's great, that not only are you already looking at, "What can I get out of this experience at high school and looking forward to college," but you're already looking at, "How can I give back to the student body?" So that's really great, and so I want to congratulate you on that and wish you luck on Friday as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Well, best of luck in your election.
Thank you.
I think you've got name recognition out there. I have two daughters at the ranch right now, and I, looking at my agenda, I said, "Oh, do you know Ms. Nelson?" And my daughter Rachel said, "Yeah, I think she's running for student body." So you got the recognition there, that's good. On the community service, I can only encourage you to continue, because it takes all of us to make a community. And if you are available on Sunday, we have a Kattati Historical Society barbecue, and we're always looking for volunteers. So just to continue that trend, and best of luck in your election.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Harvey?
Boy, I don't know where I go from here, but I am just totally amazed at how well-rounded you are, and not only do you have the thoughts of things like leadership, you actually walk the talk, because then you do that by coaching your sister's volleyball team. So I'm just totally impressed with all that you've accomplished. I think you will go far, and I wish you good luck on your election and in your future plans to be a lawyer. I think you'll do an excellent job.
Yeah.
No, you can't leave yet. It's not time yet. Everybody has wished you luck for Friday. Of course, it was the first thing I wrote down, but, you know, going last, but yeah, definitely best of luck to you on that. You know, it's an impressive list. I think that's very exciting to go to another country and help build homes for underprivileged people. I think that's something that'll probably stick with you all your life. You know, it's a really special thing to do things for those that don't have what we have. And I wanted to ask you, if you had anyone in the audience you might want to introduce tonight that maybe came with you?
Yeah, I brought my family, my dad, Ron, my mom, Kathy, and my sister Jenna.
I have an older brother, too, but he's in college in Nevada.
Okay, he's got a good excuse not to be here tonight, that's fine. So, you know, you will be coming back on April 22nd at the next meeting, and we always like to ask, you know, if there's things that you maybe think might be missing from Kattati that would be a great thing to have for maybe just teenagers if you want to stay focused, but it certainly doesn't have to be focused on just teenagers. And maybe just to check in with your friends at the ranch and say, you know, "If you guys, you know, is there something that Kattati, it'd be great if they offered that to us, something you could do, if it's sports-related, school-related, whatever." It's nice for us to hear those things. We can't always act on them right away. Sometimes it may take years to get something done, but it's really nice and important to hear those things. So we'd love to, if you'd check in with your friends, to come back in two weeks and give us some of that information, if you could. But other than that, you probably need to go home soon and finish homework for tonight, I'm just saying. So you and your family are free to go at any point in time, but thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Bye.
All right, at this point in time, we'll have the approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes? None? All right. We will now move into citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. And, wow, wouldn't you know that the first name, I can't read, but somebody who lives in -- oh, John King! Wow! All of a sudden, you have fancy handwriting, what can I say? All of a sudden, look at that! Please, come on.
Maybe I need to go back to...
No, no, it's fine. It's all good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's true, I'm John King from Pen Grove, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. There is an issue I'd like to bring to your attention. I did bring some copies of documents. I hope you have them before you. I thought it was appropriate to make an appearance here, as I'm in the middle of standing before other city councils here in Sonoma County on this same issue. I think by now, most people in Sonoma County have read or have reason to believe there will be water rationing here in Sonoma County at some point this year. So for your consideration, a brief look at some history concerning water. The top document that you have in front of you is dated 1992. It's a one-page agreement between North Marin Water District and the city of Rona Park. In 1990, two years before this agreement was made, North Marin Water District asked the city of Petaluma to borrow 3.6 million gallons a day of water. Petaluma's had a surplus entitlement. North Marin would pay the bill. Well, they made an agreement, and then two years later, North Marin loaned that same water entitlement to the city of Rona Park. But in that particular instance, the city of Rona Park built M section and put permanent reliance on that water. That's a problem, because the Department of Health stepped in and took the position that Petaluma could not have its water back. That's what happens when you loan water and somebody puts reliance on it, you don't get it back. So now we'll fast forward, and if you turn to the second page, this is a discussion between the Sonoma County Water Agency, Randy Poole, and Marin Municipal Water District, which is Santa Phil, Corder Madera, Sausalito. And this document is dated 2005, and what happened in 2005 is Marin Municipal Water District exercised an option to buy another 5,000 acre feet of water from Sonoma County. When you drive south today from Petaluma to Nevada along the 101 corridor, you will see the construction work, and that construction work has been about the building and placement of a new, much larger transmission water line that will come up to the water storage tank at Castania Road, south into Petaluma. I find it absolutely amazing that our five county supervisors, who are identified by the state of California as the only individuals in this county to have police authority over water exports, that they would continue to allow this project to move forward, make that water the additional water, bringing the total up to about 8 billion gallons a year going to Marin. When we have all of rural Sonoma County, who's not in the headcount for Lake Sonoma, and nobody in agriculture that makes our food possible is in the headcount for that same water, they're using wastewater from the sewage plants to make beef possible and dairy products possible that are sold under the organic label.
Mr. King, if I could just get you to wrap up, if you could, please?
I'll wrap it up. I'll come back at another date and bring a couple of documents that address the law, but I think it's an urgent issue. I hope you, the city council, consider this, and it's your opportunity to either talk to me individually, talk to Mr. Rabbit, who I'm up against. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Berich?
Mr. Berich, and if, when you're done with citizens' business, would you like to comment on?
My?
Please.
Thank you. Councilman George Berich. Two weeks ago, the city should have planned a city council meeting, but the city council canceled that meeting. Very rare occasion when the city council cancels a meeting, but it's been very, very frequent in the last year or two that many planning commission meetings and many design review meetings have been canceled. Now, two weeks ago, we had a council meeting canceled, and I think it's fair to say through common sense reasoning that Katati is in a serious state of decline. By the lack of meetings, the lack of items on the agenda, I think it would behoove you, through all the campaign promises that you made when running for office, that you would take any opportunity to put some things on the agenda, as rare and unique a situation that might be, and maybe hold a meeting where you can discuss some of the things that have been on your, on your wish list. And you had a perfect opportunity two weeks ago to do that, but you took a little hiatus. So, I think the town is in decline, and I think the, the canceling of these meetings and so forth is indicative of that fact. Also, the, Mr. DeLoso, you had promised that, that the logos behind you, the city logo, that temporary logo was going to be temporary. And that logo was designed outside of public view, expensed upon, we don't know where the money came from. And we'd like to get back to our original city logo and city seal that the city council voted on some years ago. And you had promised that that was temporary, and yet it's 2014 and it's still there. So, I'd like to see you make good on that promise. Also, you may have heard through the, through, I've, I've heard from a reliable source that we have one sworn police officer in Katati who recently went into Michael's Harley-Davidson and bought a brand-new, very expensive new Harley-Davidson and paid cash. Now, what makes this most interesting, so this is a police officer who declared bankruptcy a couple of years ago. So, you might find that interesting. You might want to look into that, how that's possible, how a police officer can pay cash for a brand-new motorcycle. Also, we haven't heard much about tubbies moving out of Katati. We always hear of certain businesses that may want to come to Katati, but we don't hear much from the city manager or the council about the ones that leave. And I'd like to hear a little more fairness on, on that issue. Also, the museum, the Katati Museum here in the, in the city hall, chamber, city hall building was meant to be, or was promised to be, a temporary location. Prue Draper came before us and promised that this would be a temporary location. I would like to see or hear, hear an explanation of when that museum's going to move to its permanent location. Thank you.
Mr. Berich, item two, did you want to?
Item two?
Yeah.
I see that, that the explanation and the staff report on item two talks about additional staff funding of $100,000, but it doesn't, it's not clear in the staff report where that additional 1,000, $100,000 is being allocated. And I would ask you to pull that item tonight and discuss where that money is going. I would hate to see that money being spread or spent somehow on, on helping pass Measure G to increase sales taxes. I know, I know the city looks like they're working very hard behind the scenes, putting out direct mailers and other types of documents to bolster the argument for Measure G, but I'd like to find out where that $100,000 is being spent by the city, and if so, if it's being used to promote Measure G, the citizens need to hear about it. Thank you.
And thank you. And the last speaker card I have is for Joan Simon.
Good evening. I actually recently read an article, and apparently constitutional scholars consider it out and out un-American for someone to demand or want to use a title of a former office that they once held, that there's a little-known provision, not often spoken about in the Constitution, that talks about nobility, not having nobility, the fact that elected officials should not hold on to titles that would set them apart from the people who elected them. George Washington, when he left office, did not insist on being called President Washington. John Quincy Adams, although he'd been a senator, a president, a vice president, ambassador, went by Mr. Adams. I'd like to invite all Katati citizens and friends of Katati to, like, keep Katati independent at www.facebook.com/IndependentKatati. This is my personal attempt to focus the current arguments on whether we're to maintain Katati as an independent viable city that honors the past while looking towards the future. So far, in only two days, 65 citizens, including Supervisor David Rabbit, have already liked the page. Eighty percent of these are people I don't know, so clearly the word is spreading, as being a place where citizens can easily express their support for Katati maintaining its own police force, being served by experienced public officials, and not being swallowed up by Rona Park. In order to meet my personal standards of factual accountability, any posts need to be messaged to me for vetting. Towards that end, I would like to challenge anyone opposed to the passage of Measure G in June to send me a detailed line-item budget showing exactly what they would cut if we were to lose the $900,000 per year the tax rate stabilization measure that we currently have brings in. It's very easy to complain, but if you're going to cut salaries, tell us exactly whose salaries. Tell us exactly what you think they should be paid. Tell us your criteria for setting those salaries. Tell us what other cities in the Bay Area pay officials for those salaries, and tell us the level of experience any public officials with lower salaries have. Also, be sure to break out pension and benefits from base salaries. Similarly, if you're going to cut services, tell us exactly which ones, what that means in terms of staff hours, and when or even if certain services we currently enjoy will be diminished. You want to get rid of the police and contract with the sheriff? Show exactly what it will cost for exactly the same level of service and staffing we currently have through the sheriff's office. Show the average projected response time for a life-threatening emergency if we contract with the sheriff. Show the average projected response time for other citizen calls. Thank you. Keep Katati independent and see you online.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Mr. Carricker?
I wasn't going to speak on citizens' business, but now I feel compelled to. I'll be quite happy to submit a proposed budget to Ms. Simon, showing some cuts and some things. And I'll do that, but I would also invite anyone in this audience to contribute to a blog called katatitaxgreed.com, and the remarks will not be edited. They will be published verbatim and then commented on, but I believe in a free and open dialogue and wouldn't try to micromanage anybody else's comments to that level. Since we're on the subject of Measure G, I'm looking back at 2010, and I remember standing next to Officer Cowpey. He was holding a sign that said, yes on Measure A, and I was holding a sign that said, no on Measure A. And we had a very friendly discussion, and I told him that I was very much for the police and for the police getting everything they deserved, but I honestly did not believe once the measure was passed, the police would get their fair share. I'll repeat something I've said before. In 2009, before Measure A, the police budget was $2.4 million. In 2010, it dropped to 1.9, and then it was restored, but only to 2.1. That's a net loss of $276,000, Chief Parish. So, when you endorse going forward with a tax increase to support the police, I really hope you look at this body very carefully and realize what their word is worth, because in the past, it has not been true to form. So, as an advocate of the police, if at all possible, get it in writing this time. The citizens deserve police. Your men deserve to be treated fairly, but this Measure G, I can see it coming. It's going to be more planners, more consultants, more roundabout substitutes, you name it. But don't trust them, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there E.S., Mrs. Draper?
I signed up for another number, but I just need to reply to Mr. Berich, who indicated that when we asked for the room for the Katati Historical Museum, we said it would be temporary. It is temporary. Define temporary. It's settled. Someday, we hope to enlarge and move somewhere else, but frankly, we had never imagined that we would get the kind of support from the community that we have had in preparing that room, remodeling that room, equipping that room, and filling it up with a fantastic array of Katati memorabilia. So, someday we'll move when we outgrow it. So, yeah, it's, it's temporary, but so is everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment under citizens' business? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close that. And?
Excuse me, Mayor DeLoso. I just wanted to, on our police budget, in this year's adopted budget, it's 2.6 million, and it's well over half of our budget.
Thank you very much. Is there any comments from council members or questions of anything that was raised during citizens' business? Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. First of all, I appreciate the request to ask the public somebody to come up with not just some ideas, but the request was a detailed line-item budget, because it's easy to throw out a few ideas. It's a little difficult to make a budget actually work, and that's what we actually have to do. But you're missing half of it too. It isn't just that almost 900,000 that would be lost from Measure A. You're also forgetting Sacramento's fine work. The state had its own money issues the last year. I think we all know that. The good news for Governor Brown is they have a lot of money now. They're in great shape. The bad news for the city is we're not, because all cities took huge hits from redevelopment. Now, most of you don't know that. Without spending a lot of time, and I'll just tell you basically, the hit to salaries ongoing in this city this year alone, 600,000. Now, let's take that 600,000, let's add it to the roughly 850 that Measure A brings in, and unfortunately, the economy has not got back up to the level to bring that in. Property tax and sales tax have not recovered enough to replace that. You're looking, hmm, a little under 2 million. You add in the increases we've suffered in the last four years from both retirement increases with PERS and medical costs, and I think we all know how medical's been going these last few years, we're at about 2 million. That's a $2 million deficit out of a $5 million budget. This is serious. It's not a small thing. It's ridiculous to try and point this out as something that's not an emergency, and it just points out the fact that you would have to cut off half of this city practically to balance that. That just doesn't work. The bottom line with the city, the police department being half of our budget, what happens is we have to look for cuts there. That's a given. There's really little other way to go. But sadly, it doesn't take a crystal ball to see that there are not going to be enough savings there, probably to even save the city when that's done. So, even if we were willing as a community to accept having some outside lesser police surface with less people here and a much longer response, which is what we'd be getting, there's no question about that, that's still not enough to keep the city afloat. The damage that redevelopment did, I think most people just don't know that, so I wanted to underscore that. Secondly, I wanted to go back to something I heard tonight from one of my favorite out-of-town speakers, and that was the inference, if you will, that there have been some huge increases, for example, in public works or the city managers' offices and their budgets in recent years, while the police officers have stayed flat and got nothing. And I got to tell you, folks, that's just not the case. It's one thing to look at a budget. It's another to actually read it. It's one thing to present information fairly and in context, but it's certainly another to snip and present small pieces in a seeming effort to indicate something that's just not the case. And that's actually what's happening here. If you take a look at the changes in those budget numbers, they mostly reflect the loss due to the elimination of redevelopment. That's right. That's what we lost. That's why those numbers went up. For those who don't know, part of the base salary of most, most of this city, and most cities in this state, with the exception, of course, police departments, was paid portionally by redevelopment. That was lost. That was taken away from us. Unfortunately, we still have to do the same work. These people still are required to do the same work, but we're not reincorporated, excuse me, recompensated for it. So, those losses reflect that $600,000 loss a year that we lost from redevelopment. So, I wanted to clear that up. It's interesting that actually, tonight's speaker might have done us a favor by pointing out something and trying to make it appear as though the police budget had suffered and other budgets gained. All he did was point out the huge losses we had to, had to take, because those line-item increases came from having to cover from the general fund. You can see the difficulty with this. It's a simple thing, one innocuous sounding sentence designed to get people upset.
Mayor, point of order, this is--
Excuse me, I'm, I'm speaking.
Point of order, point of order. This is a violation of Brown Act. The Brown Act only allows the council--
Through the, through the mayor-- Through the mayor, through the mayor, I would like to have my speaking continue, if, if I can do that. I would like the sergeant arm to restore order in the place.
Yes.
Now, I'm going to continue and finish my thoughts. And now that I've been annoyed, I might have to go a little longer.
A little bit of second Brown Act violation.
Just a minute. So, you know what it comes down to, folks, is this. It comes down to credibility, I think. It really comes down to that, because there can be a lot of small factoids, and like this one, I was starting to explain before I was interrupted. It took us 10 minutes to explain it. Confused me, even though I know it. First time you heard it, you're probably trying to make sure it sounds right, but what's that? It's easy to do these type of distractions. The problem comes down to a simple act of credibility, and I'm just going to close with this thought. The person that often puts forward these so-called facts won't even be honest with any of us, won't come clean on the simple fact of where he lives, continually implying residence both inside city limits or inside the sphere of influence, neither which are sadly just not the case. I'm not trying to be pejorative or say anything that's not true. That's just a simple fact. The map shows it. Now, if we can't, if a person can't even be credible with you, all of you who live in this town for years about where they live, I would think you might have a hard time taking any other statements credibly too. So, I hope you'll keep those things in mind. That's just some food for thought, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me tonight.
All right, we need to move on with direction on any future agenda items. I believe Vice Mayor Skilman, you had something?
I do. Thank you. I went ahead at the request of the council and did some further research on House Resolution Number 29 involving outsourcing public services. So, what I would request is if we could make this an agenda item for the April 22nd meeting, then I can give a full update at that point and pass out copies of the amended resolution.
And if you'd be maybe just a hair more flexible, just in case, I don't know what that agenda looks like at this point, but in one of the next couple of meetings, if that's okay?
Oh, all right.
Thank you so much, just to be safe. Don't want to make a promise we can't keep. Are there, any other items for future agenda items from anybody? Not at this point? Okay. Then we'll go on to consent calendar. We have three items, items two, three, and four.
Move to approve.
Yeah, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And seeing none, that that's a 5-0 vote in favor to approve items two, three, and four. And now we're on to the public hearing, which is item five, Valparaiso Vista Lighting and Landscape District property detachment. And we'll go to Damian Obit for that, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, yes, it sounds so severe, but it's really quite simple. We, the city currently owns a .02 acre piece of property that's located off and kind of off the side of a fence, and it's not really an ideal location to have landscaping. And the item before you tonight would just, would it create the process to detach that piece from the lighting and landscape district and allow the city to move forward with a property sale on that piece of property? So, that's it in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Great, thank you. It is kind of a brief report, which we looked at this back about a month ago now. Are there any questions from council at this point in time for staff? Nope. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and open this for public hearing if anyone has any comments. And seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and look for direction from council on this.
I would move to adopt a resolution to detach a property from the Valparaiso Vista Lighting and Landscape District. A second?
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, just real quickly, I would like to say-- Yeah, just real quickly, I would like to say, I appreciate staff doing the time to look at this. I think this is a real win. You've got a small piece of property that doesn't do us much good to help beautify the city. It's expensive and time-consuming for staff to maintain. There's no benefit there for the public. On the other hand, if we remove that and give it back to a homeowner who can use it, enhances the property, there's value there. So I appreciate you taking the time to look into this, and in the future, we find more areas like this, I'm supportive of trying to do things like this. I think it's good governance.
All right, thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, that's a 5-0 vote in favor. And we are on to Item 6, which is all about our world famous redwood tree. So this will be good. Wow, okay, that was good. And we'll have a report from Vicki Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Yes, this next item before you tonight is the adoption of a resolution which would accept the albino camira coast, excuse me, redwood tree relocated to the city from the Sonoma Marin area rail transit right-of-way, and selecting Veranda Faletti Ranch as the preferred location for the retransplant of that tree, and finally authorizing the city manager to take administrative actions as necessary to cause that relocation to happen. So I'll just briefly give you a little bit of information. I would like to point out that Certified Arborist Tom Stapleton is in the audience tonight, and he has some additional information on both the tree and the process. In preparation for the construction of the Smart siding portion of the rail, it was noted that there's a redwood tree, a large 52-foot redwood tree, that would need to be removed from the right-of-way in order to maintain federal safety standards. And that redwood tree is special in that it's an albino, meaning it's chlorophyll deficient, and it's further unique because it exhibits two sets of DNA in one plant, and that's known as a chimera. So it's a very unique tree. Even more special is the fact that it's the mature, the only mature redwood tree that exhibits all of those characteristics. So the reproductive science behind the tree is especially unique and important to scientists that study such trees. Community members have been actively soliciting support and bids for the relocation, hoping to save the tree rather than have it removed with only cuttings available. So this action before you tonight would provide a site for the relocation in an effort to preserve the tree. No guarantees, of course, that the tree will survive the transplant, but the city is ready to take all reasonable care during that relocation and re-establishment period to help that happen. We had two viable alternatives in staff's mind for the relocation. One is Helen Putnam Park, and the other is the Veranda Faletti Ranch. Both sites have, Mr. Stapleton reviewed both locations, both sites have mature redwood trees either on them or in the surrounding area, and so that's a good indicator that the soil is, the soil, sunlight, water is beneficial enough for the trees, that's suitable for redwood trees. Both are relatively large areas, meaning that we can find a location where the tree can quietly reestablish itself and also not be a danger to the public should the re-establishment not be successful. And finally, that because it's a large stature tree, we needed a large area so it would not outgrow its surroundings. So those were the criteria that we looked at, and we came up with the two locations, the two potential locations. Some of the advantages of Helen Putnam are that there's irrigation readily available, and it, like I said, is a large, large enough area. Veranda Faletti has further advantages in staff's mind because water is not that far away. There is water to that property as well. We'd have to extend irrigation lines and install a backflow device, but there is water relatively close. It's fenced already, meaning that the tree could be secured, and we would just, depending on the location, might have to do some additional fencing to protect it from the livestock during the re-establishment. But probably most importantly in staff's mind was the fact that it helps achieve the long-term goals that we have for the Veranda Faletti Ranch, which is a combination of factors exhibiting stewardship. In other words, agricultural stewardship, habitat restoration and stewardship. And we think that the tree would be not only valuable in those regards, but that the public would enjoy it as well, and with the long-term development of the park, with interpretive signage, we think it would be a good partnership there. The relocation, we're not proposing that the city pay the cost for the relocation. The action that you would take tonight would simply be to accept the tree and to select the location. The transplanting would be done by licensed contractors who are experienced in tree removal and tree transplant. At this time, Smart is, has agreed that they will relocate, that the tree can be relocated, and they're not interested in simply killing the tree. I'll call it killing the tree. The physical improvements, as I mentioned, to Veranda Faletti are relatively minor. Crews would dig a hole that would result in very little earthwork, relatively little earthwork, and city crews would extend the irrigation line, install the backflow device and the fencing. We're estimating that that cost would be less than $10,000, and it can be paid for with parking lot fees, which are targeted to do most of the expenditures that we need for physical improvements at Veranda Faletti. So with that, that concludes my formal presentation, and as I mentioned, Tom Stapleton is in the audience. He has some additional information that the council may be interested in hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you for that report. Are there any questions for staff at this point? Any council members? None to my right, nothing to my left? Thank you for that. I do want to emphasize one thing, too, as the public comes up to speak on this topic, is that I think since early on that we had heard about this, you know, the city took a very keen interest in, you know, what is it that we can do with certainly some restrictions that we have on finances? You know, we can't afford to pay to have this tree removed. I personally want to be there to actually see a 55-to-60-foot redwood removed when that time does come, and hopefully it will. But that we would, we've always said that we would be very happy to accept it into one of our city parks, to run irrigation line to it if fencing's necessary, you know, all of those kinds of provisions. And I think long-term, I think it's really important, because it's a critical piece, certainly to science, but as an educational tool, too. And I would like to see some kind of an educational panel that talks about this tree and maybe the history of it and its significance to the region. So I'm encouraged that Smart, at least, has said we will stop with what we had planned on doing, and let's just take a step back and see what we can all figure out. So I'm certainly encouraged by that. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I have three speaker cards. If anyone's interested in speaking on this topic, and you haven't filled out a card, please feel free to do so. So let's go ahead and open the public hearing and start with Mr. Beric.
Thank you, Chairman. Did I hear from the report any suggestions on doing any private, finding private financing for this tree removal and relocation project? The $10,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money, and I wanted to, I would like to hear if any, there's been any effort to raise these funds privately. We know that there may be some charitable people in town who may want to contribute, like Jenny Faletti. I mean, she received $3 million for the park across the street. She might be able to come up with a few bucks. Prue Draper is a very well-to-do and successful woman here in town. She may be able to donate a few dollars. Trying to think who else, Joan Simon. She may be able to, between the three of them, they may be able to just fund the whole thing themselves. So I would like to see that, the private sector get involved before going to the taxpayer. And I'd like to hear some discussion on that tonight.
Thank you very much. And next, I have Prue Draper.
Excuse me, we have some new people here tonight who didn't know about the card business.
Not a problem, not a problem.
Prue Draper, 718 West School Street. That tree hit me like a bomb. I had been back from a trip to New Zealand for exactly 30 hours, when all of a sudden I was overwhelmed by calls from newspaper reporters. Even Reuters called, KGO called, Channel 5 called. They wanted to know about the tree. Well, I had written a story for our Historical Society newsletter, never dreaming that it would create such a furore. Anyway, the fact that we had had an unusual tree here for all these years, and I hadn't known it, and nobody else much had known it, except my friend Louise Santaro, whom I've known since we were both in high school. She grew up in Katati. She's lived on East Katati Avenue for over 60 years. She saw Pete Tapiaen plant that tree. She's talked to the whole Tapiaen family. They, a lot of them were here for a family reunion around the tree this weekend. She tells me that there were dozens and dozens and dozens of cars there all weekend. The people at the glass company are not too happy about the use of their parking lot for people coming to visit the tree. We've even had people come to the museum to find out, how do we find the tree? We have a tourist attraction, folks, that we never even knew we had, and it makes it sensible not only to save that tree, because scientifically, it's worth saving. There's an arborist here who I know is going to tell you more details about why it's worth saving, but I certainly agree that it is. And you know, Mr. Beric, I bet there are people that would contribute to that tree, because there's just a lot of love coming from all over the country about that tree. We're famous. So where to put it? I kind of think Veranda Faletti is the best place, simply because it can be under inspection. And when those tourists come, they'll also see Katati City Hall, the Katati Room, the Katati Museum, temporary though it may be, and why not have it be in the center of town? However, the maintenance of it certainly is a problem, I understand. Helen Putnam Park is probably better located. When Louise or her daughter comes up, they're going to tell you that Sunflower Park is a perfect place for it. Different strokes for different folks. I still think that one here that's easy to find, easy to put on a map, will draw attention to a park that we would like to draw more attention to, is probably the best location. And since the utility guys have to go out there and look after the sheep and the steers anyway, they can keep an eye on the tree. And perhaps raising money to build an extra fence around the tree could be done. The Historical Society, temporary though it may be, may be able to raise money for that. We think it's a, I say, I think it's a good idea. I can't speak for all of them, but I think that they all are perfectly astonished at what a hit it's become. Katati is a name that has not been heard in as many places as it's being heard now. I went to a big ceremony Sunday, and every single person that came up to me said, "How's that tree? Is the tree okay? Are they going to save the tree? We going to save that tree?" Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom Stapleton.
Ladies and gentlemen, can you hear me? Okay. First, I want to say I am so humbled by the support everybody, from the city level to members of the community and internationally regarding this tree, and the support we've gotten from universities across the Bay Area and across the nation regarding how unique this tree is. Again, as you've heard, this is a chimeric redwood, which there's only 10 in existence. And I have here to present to you at your time pictures of the different chimeras, especially the Katati tree. What makes this tree unique, as you've heard, it's the tallest and the largest. Most chimeras are around 15 feet or less in size, because they're, the nature of the mutation tends to be unstable. But this particular tree, being the largest and the tallest, it has stability, stable characteristics, which are absolutely unique and astounding. So with that said, there's so much to learn with this tree. As some has pointed out, that it's a sick patient, and it doesn't really have intrinsic value, and I beg to differ. This tree could teach us a lot. If we can understand the symptoms that this tree is showing us, we can better manage the redwood forests, and we can find out what's going on out there. Again, right now is where we stand with Smart. I have submitted four proposals from tree-moving contractors, so it's in their hands and the ball is in their court. So I'm not asking the city of Katati to pay for it. I think Smart is 100% responsible. They should be, should pay for this. I had correspondences with Councilmember Susan Harvey back in 2012 to save the tree, and her and I received reassurances that the tree was going to be saved by Smart and that they were going to take proactive steps. Back then, they had time to relocate the tracks or do another assessment that would not have cost the taxpayers a ton of money that would now, because the train station there has already been built. So the option of relocating the tracks is not there, that possibly could have been there back in 2012. So relocation is really the only option before us to save the tree. Taking cuttings, I propagated the tree, and there are problems presented, which I could explain at a later time. But again, moving the tree, I believe, is the only option. And I'd like to just mention that right now, the petition stands at over 600 people who have signed it from all over the world and locally, saying, "Please save this tree." I've talked to experts today from UC Berkeley and in the past with Stanford University, saying just how unique this tree is. Even Save the Redwoods League is behind this. So anyways, I ask you, ladies and gentlemen, to vote yes to save this tree, and I thank you very much for your time. And do I present this? Okay.
And thank you, Mr. Stapleton. And don't be surprised that we may have some questions for you, may call you back up.
Just want to say that I offer my consultation services free to the city regarding the tree.
Thank you very much. Louise Santaro. You might want to pull the microphone down a little closer to you. Go ahead, yeah, just, there you go.
Okay.
Grab the handle, a little bit lower. Here we go. We got some help coming.
Oh, you're better.
There you go.
Okay. All right, I'm Louise Santaro, and I'm the one that lives directly across from the tree. And this tree has been with us. I've been in Katati for over 60-some years, and we, my husband and I saw Tapiaen plant the tree. And he was the one that was a foreman for Ronart Seed Farm, and it was a thing. And now he's gone, and his wife is gone, and the girls are all here, and they were there Sunday. You could not get into Progress Glass Company parking lot. And then they came over, and this is one spot, like I told my kids, I really screwed up. I should have went out with a pad and said, "Would you guys sign it? Tell me where you're from, and then we'll give it to the council." But I screwed up. But I mean, I go against Prue. I just, I think that that tree would be better off in Sunflower Park. And it's, it's a good park, and it's just that the tree is this way, and the park is this way, and our house is right in the middle. And I think that's the best place that that tree can go. Now, here you go. You spend all this money on this train, train building out there? Now, wouldn't that be a good spot for that tree? Not here in Katati, in Veranda and Faletti spot. I disagree with that totally. So that's all I have to say, because I can't keep up with Tom Cavett of Singleton. He knows it all, but I've lived there, and I've seen it, and every year I'd say, gee, it's yellow, it's going to die, not knowing what it was. But here it is, it's still here, and everybody's arguing where they want to put it. So that's all I can say. Just hang in there with us. Just hang in there with us, and hope you agree with me. Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Joan Simon.
Well, I've been quite amazed to learn, we all know that Mr. Barish is an expert on just about everything that comes before this council, but I never knew he was an expert on my personal finances. Hopefully, the NSA didn't give him that information. Anyway, I definitely will donate to this effort, as I hope others will. I know that Mr. Carricker, who has an interest in Cotati, even though he doesn't necessarily live here, he's a rancher. Arabian horses are certainly not a poor man's hobby, and perhaps he can help with that as well, as well as everybody. I really think that it should be a community effort. I'd also like to see, as much as possible, figure out a way to put some pressure on the state itself, because of the rarity of this, that we might be able to get some kind of money for the maintenance of this. Perhaps get it designated as some kind of a state landmark, not just a city landmark. I don't know how you go about doing that, but perhaps that could be looked at. I'd like to comment that there is definitely a trend towards ecotourism. I've studied this as part of my work as a restaurant consultant, as it applies to restaurants and sustainability of the food source. But tourists actually will actively seek out places, and it's called ecotourism. With that in mind, I actually think that there, I agree with Prue, there is a tremendous opportunity here for economic development based upon this tree. I think that this tree can bring people to town. I'd love to see someone, I was sitting there thinking, "Wouldn't you like to go to the Chimera Cafe?" I think that there's, why not? I mean, there's a number of ways that the city could foster people coming to the city and spending money here. So with that in mind, there might be some way for some of our economic development funds to go towards the annual maintenance of the tree. And the final thing, I don't know the answer, perhaps you can get the answer from staff, is why isn't SMART paying for this tree to be relocated? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Neil Hancock.
Yes, good evening, Councilman Neil Hancock. I certainly support the actions of being able to save the tree. When you look at the whole discussion that's going on in the country on what are genetics, there are a puzzle for this generation, and there's a lot of people that it could really be inspiring to, for younger people. So I think it's a nice challenge to be there for, in an educational facility. I certainly went along and had a look at it, once it had got the visibility around the rest of the country. Oh, what's going on here? And met a couple of people there from Oakland who were coming up to see the tree, and we had a discussion about it. And so it was a very nice occasion. So anyway, it looks like it's a possibility for Cotati to really promote that educational side, I think, as well as all the other possibilities. Thank you very much.
And thank you. And Ms. Jenny Blaker.
Jenny Blaker, Arthur Street, thank you. Yes, it's fascinating to realize that this tree that we all pass thousands and thousands of times, and never knew, probably most people never realized how unique it was until very recently. I've been wondering why the siding is going in now, why the tree has to be moved rather than left alone, and so on. So I was glad to hear a little bit more about that from Tom Stapleton this evening. Certainly sounds like if SMART knew about this in 2012, they could have done something now, and they should pay for relocating it. I've also been wondering about cloning and other ways of saving it, but it certainly sounds as if the expert opinion is that it needs to be moved. It sounds as if the Falletti Park would be a great location, since it's near City Hall and in an open space district space already, and could be monitored and taken care of well there. So it's great, and thank you very much for your being so proactive already to do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no further speaker cards. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on the location, which is what we're discussing tonight? Mr. Carricker?
It's a warm, fuzzy story, and it's nice that everybody feels so good about the tree. If it's going to be located anywhere, that's probably as good a location as any. The issue I have is that by authorizing the location of the tree, you're helping SMART in a way that negates the agreement they made when they solicited funds for SMART. They wanted money to build a train, not to preserve a tree that was a scientific curiosity. People talk as if this tree were priceless. I have the prices here. These were the bids that were submitted to SMART, just for moving the tree. One bid is $18,000, one bid is $59,000, one is $69,000, one is $84,000. That's a fair amount of other people's money for a feel-good project. If the people in this room want to fund that themselves, more power to them. That's terrific. But I do pay taxes for SMART, and I don't want one-half of one cent of the money that was supposed to go to a train, of limited use anyway, go into somebody's pet hobby project.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who has not turned in a card who would like to say yes, please, come up? If we could just get your name for the record, that would be great.
Linda Scoco. With global warming, and all the trees that were knocked down for the freeway, I really think that we should save that tree. Thank you.
Thank you. One last time, anybody else out there who's not filled out a card? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring it back to City Council for questions or comments that you might have. Anyone care to start? Nobody's making eye contact except Mark Landman, so please, Councilmember Landman.
Well, you know, one of the difficult things about being up here sometime is we're entrusted to make decisions for what you want done. And there's an assumption in that, that we know what you want. And generally speaking, as people that live here in this community, and have for years, and know you all pretty well, we have a good sense of that. But still, sometimes that's difficult. That's why it's such a relief tonight to have something where it is so crystal clear what this community wants. And not just this community, the entire county. And as a matter of fact, from the press, we're seeing, it appears, most of the nation. There's some pretty strong support for this. There's no question, we're in a difficult position. I'm not going to sit and point fingers what oversight's may have happened to put us here. But what I like to see, what I'm pleased to see right now, is SMART Farhad Mansurian is committed, and told his staff, his referral is to see that thing moved, and instructed them to find a way to do it. So that's good. I think we'll see that done. And, you know, that's all, all that's really left is to decide a location. Now, you know, I'd be happy to see this in any park, I think, in town. There's a lot of good reasons, and you've both, a couple ladies in the audience have said, a couple of real good places where I could see it. But there's two things that stick out with me, and the only things I wanted to mention in common tonight. Number one, safety certainly has to be paramount. Now, I suppose I could ask Mr. Stapleton what the odds are for something like this, because I know transplanting's a dicey thing. It's not 100% chance of success. And with that possibility, if it isn't, I would be very concerned. This is a 50-foot tree. This is not a lightweight thing. I would prefer to have it somewhere for those first years, where it can be blocked off from the public, where it can be safe. We have to protect, especially, look who uses our parks, families, kids. That does tend, for me at least, to lean towards Veronda Falletti. Secondarily, just as importantly, with all this work and interest, and knowing now, hearing so much about what an important tree this is, it's real clear, you want to protect the tree and give it the best chance. There's going to be a lot of natural curiosity. I'm a lucky Lou, too. I went to see the thing. I think after a transplant, being somewhere where it's fenced off, like Veronda Falletti currently is, and with a temporary small fence around it, too, inside that, might give it the best chance. So for me at least, it kind of leads me in that direction. But I did want to say to all the public, both those here, those listening, and everybody that's contacted us through email in the last few weeks, we've heard you. I've certainly heard you. I will be supporting whatever the city can do. And just to close, the comment about trying to push people to put money into this or not, and I do appreciate those who were good-naturedly and honestly interested in doing that. But I think we have a very clear mandate from the public on this. This isn't something that's a project we can do, just we raise some outside money to do it. We've been told very clearly by just about everybody, they want this done. It's a minimal amount to do the work, the lines we have to do at Veronda Falletti, and I think that small amount is something the city can bear for something that's this important to its citizens. So that's what I see from this.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm going to go back down this way. Councilmember Harvey.
Well, as Mr. Stapleton pointed out, I've been working on this for the last couple of years. I thought that it was taken care of a while back, when SMART first started working down there. But then, with the change of plans and how they had to do things, things got moved around. So I was a little bit surprised when, lo and behold, I guess it was a month or so ago, when I was contacted again and said, "Oh, no, they're going to cut the tree down, and they're going to cut the tree down in three weeks." I'm like, "Oh, my God." So I appreciate the information that Mr. Stapleton even found out that that was happening, and all the effort that Prue put into it, and especially staff working to find if we have a site that's even viable. I was impressed when I talked to Mr. Stapleton about its, what I was concerned was its viability, because I, you know, just naturally assumed that replanting a tree wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't survive. So I was very impressed when he said that, no, these trees do well with moving. So I thought that that was wonderful. And originally, I know that the Veronda Falletti wasn't necessarily one of the sites. So I, in my mind, had sort of wanted it there with everything that's going on there. And ultimately, when we want to have, you know, educational and a park and all that there, I thought to myself, you know, what better place? So I was extremely pleased when I heard that that was a possibility, because I was concerned, I knew it would be fenced off in private, but I was concerned about the irrigation. So I'm really happy that that is a suitable location there. So I really appreciate everyone's work on this, and I think it's very clear, as Councilmember Landman pointed out, you know, I've received a lot of phone calls and emails on this, and people are really interested in keeping this tree. And it is a gem. It is something, and possibly tourists, maybe. Obviously, we've had plenty of people come to visit it, and I'm hoping that it will thrive, and we will be able to teach with it, and find out more about why these things happen, and hopefully, it will survive. But I am in favor of picking a location, and I prefer the Falletti portion.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore.
Only in Cotati. I mean, who knew? Albino redwood. I think something of this significance, it's really difficult to put a price on, you know, money comes and goes. Apparently, albino redwood trees don't. I'm curious if Mr. Stapleton can answer what the success rate is on transplanting these trees at over 50 feet tall? Please. That's my only concern, is if we do end up moving that, which it sounds like we're going to have to, in order to try to preserve it, what's the likelihood, or what's the success rate of moving these sized trees?
With the four contractors that I spoke with, they have, I was told, on average, is about 95% success rate of moving a tree this large. One contractor specifically has moved redwoods larger than this one. One was 80 feet tall, and I think three feet in diameter, successfully for apple. So the chances, even though this tree has a disadvantage because of the chlorophyll mutation, I believe that the tree stands at least 90 or better percent chance of surviving the relocation. Now, something else that I wanted to point out, as far as the safety concern you might have, is all the contractors have been advised that the tree, once it's established its new location, needs to be cabled, so that way, if wind or any kind of other significant weather event happens, that the tree won't blow over. So just wanted to kind of reassure you there. And then also, too, I support the idea of having a fence built around it. I do have some people that said that they're willing to donate some money, but they want to see a credible plan accepted by SMART. So that's just something to throw out there. I don't have exact dollar amounts, nor would that be appropriate to say, but I just wanted to put that out there, that maybe we might have some private citizens fund building a fence around it, or some interpretive signs and things like that. So that's encouraging to hear.
And you said one of the bids from the tree-removing and relocation people, that moved that 80-foot redwood? Is that one of the companies that's bidding on this?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's encouraging.
And if you go to the Facebook page for the tree, there is a picture there showing an actual redwood tree that's larger than this one, being relocated and being loaded onto a lowboy truck. And we also have a video there that shows the tree location process, so the members of the public can be informed exactly what takes place in moving a tree that size. So this is not something just where a bunch of guys get together on a weekend and, you know, get their pickup trucks together. These are really professional movers, and they stand behind their work, and they're, and some of them are nationally recognized for the work that they do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, against Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, if you have further questions for Tom.
Does the cabling stay on there forever, or does it stay for a period of time?
The cabling stays on for approximately five years. And again, that's determined on how the tree is adapting to the new location, and, but that's about an average that I would say. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Skilman.
So with that in mind.
Oh, sorry.
I would favor, if we were going to relocate the tree, I think Falletti would be a good spot there, especially with the open space and the educational component that we could have right there. So I would be in support of that.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if you're done now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, okay, perfect. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Well, and you, Councilmember Moore just briefly touched on this. My leaning towards the Veronda location was based on the fact that it is protected open space. And so the idea of if we put it in a park, and somehow that got shifted, we don't want to think that it would, but the fact that it's already in open space, and would be more protected, was appealing to me. And being able to, again, like you said, tie it into the educational component, which is what the land is there for, would be fantastic. And I wanted to say as well, I think, given the fact that this is, this is an issue that SMART was aware of a couple of years ago, is documented, some of the public outcry and support of it would be great, focused on maybe putting a little pressure on SMART to fund the relocation process. And they may step up and voluntarily do it, but we certainly have a lot of people that could voice that opinion if it is theirs. So I would also be in support of relocating it and trying to preserve one of the things that, in addition to many others, makes Cotati unique.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Stapleton, I need you to come back up. I have a question for you, sorry. But I'll state it really slow as you come up here. I had a question on soil types. And so, you know, of the two options that we're looking at, I would assume here at Veronda Falletti, it's probably a sandy loam, but I'm, and I'm curious, over at Putnam Park, which was the other possible site, I'm guessing it's probably more, even though there was, I'm sure Phil brought in, probably more of clay adobe. Is there a difference for survival rate? I mean, we're talking about a taproot.
Sure.
On a huge tree, but the taproot's not very deep on redwoods.
Okay, clay adobe soil tends to pond water more than sandy loam. So sandy loam water can move through it quicker. And I would say a sandy loam location would be more ideal than adobe, just for that fact that you're not going to have the roots be flooded, so to speak, and that will aid in the development of the tree, so.
Okay, that was my question for you, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Just was curious about that, I didn't have an answer. You know, and I've even been contacted by the Native American community, saying that they have a very strong interest in this they have a very strong interest in this tree, because it means a lot to them as well. And so I think there's a number of variables here, and Vice Mayor, did we get an opinion from you? We're gonna take a vote eventually, but of location? I don't recall if you stated that.
Yes, I was preferring the open space, since it's protected.
Yes, you did say that. You did say that, and I was listening, thank you. Yeah, and at first, you know, I think one of the early stories that came out on some newscast was looking over at Putnam Park, and I sat and thought about that, knowing the sand, excuse me, the clay adobe that's over there, since I live over there, going, that's probably not gonna be good for the long-term health of this redwood. But over here at Veranda Fletti, I think it has a lot of things going in its favor, and maybe even most importantly, that we'll have City Hall eyes and the police department's eyes on this property, as opposed to anywhere else in the city where you'd have to physically go somewhere. And I just, I mean, how do you vandalize a 60-foot-tall tree? It's not easy, I'm sure, but just, you know, I'm not even thinking of vandalism, I'm just thinking of curiosity and people kinda wanting to come and take samples.
That's when we deputize the steer.
Very nice, okay, good. Sheriff Sheep. You know, several times I've been over there for different meetings along Santero Way, and every time I've either, and I rarely drive that way, but every time I've gone by in the last couple of months, there's always a small crowd of people there. And I think that's going to most likely be the case, kind of regardless of where we put this. So, so Council, what we have in front of us, are there any comments or questions from staff at this point? Nothing? Okay. So what we have before us, Council, is a decision to accept the tree as it's being relocated by someone into the, in the future here, of a couple of locations. We've had one other suggestion from Mrs. Santero, and that's over at Sunflower Park. And it sounded like, what I was hearing, was the preponderance of the council is saying that Veranda Fletti, somewhere within the Veranda Fletti property, is an acceptable location. So I think what we need to do is move forward on adopting this resolution, if somebody's willing to do that, unless there's any further discussion on this.
I would think with Ms. Harvey's extensive knowledge and history on this, it would be appropriate to put forth a resolution.
Tilly Mike. I make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting an albino chamera coast redwood tree from the Sonoma Marin area rail transit, selecting Veranda Fletti Ranch as the site for relocation, and authorizing the city manager to take such administrative actions as necessary to effectuate such relocation. I would second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any last further discussions from council members?
It's priceless.
No? I'll take that as a no. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, show that that's a 5-0 vote in favor of accepting this tree over at Veranda Fletti Park. And thank you all for your comments and concerns. And we're gonna take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Please, if we could. Yes, indeed. All right, we are now at the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor DeLasso and City Council. I have a few report items. First of all, I wanted to let you know that this Saturday, our police department will assist the Sebastopol Police Department with street closures for their Apple Blossom Parade. You may remember last year that Sebastopol, their police department helped us with our Kids' Day Parade and 50th Anniversary Celebration. We will have five police cadets, one volunteer and one police officer attend the Apple Blossom Parade. It's an ongoing mutual aid situation between the cities of Kattati and Sebastopol, and as I said last summer, Sebastopol did send us additional personnel, and we were very pleased with their assistance. And I wanted to give you an update on one of our local businesses that we were able to keep in Kattati that was looking to leave. This was a few months ago. Claire Fettro, owner of The Hub Cyclory, a business that has been located in Kattati since 1976, which by the way is before I was born, contacted me for assistance with relocating her store, and in response, that day, we assembled a city team that met with Claire and her potential landlord to discuss the issues that she was facing with her current location and the need to relocate. The team included Community Development Director Vicki Parker, Building Official Glenn Shaneblatt, and Assistant City Manager Micah Hinkle, and the group worked with Claire, her husband Chaz, and the property owner to coordinate a move across the street. It allowed the shop to continue operations during the move and to relocate, you know, without ever closing their shop, which was a really significant thing. The move did include construction work that needed to take place, and so our staff worked to get the permits to them and the inspections done in a timely manner, so that everything could go smoothly. And I'm very pleased our team was able to move that quickly to successfully retain a longtime Kattati business. Claire and Chaz have been an integral part of the Kattati community for a long time, and we wanted to do everything we could to keep them here. And just lastly, on the spring art exhibit that is in our hallways, earlier this evening, the city hosted a reception in honor of the student artists from Thomas Page Academy, whose work is showcased in our hallways. The theme is "From the Garden," and the artwork was done by Ms. Gutman's, Ms. Sullivan's, and Mrs. Peterson's second-grade classes. The artwork was hung last week by Jennifer Gore, who is a parent and also runs the computer lab at Thomas Page Academy. Our city manager's office intern Samantha Sussar helped coordinate this event, and as you may recall, Thomas Page Academy has exhibited student artwork annually at City Hall for a few years now, maybe several years, and the academy administrators are very helpful in working with us and curating the art. And of course, the student artwork is always well-received by those who visit City Hall, as well as the employees. That concludes my report, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any questions from council or comments? Looking all directions, yes.
I just have a quick comment. I had coffee a little while ago with somebody that I used to work with on the CEC, and so he commented that he was really glad that we were still having the art receptions and having the decorations on the wall. So he was glad to hear that that was a continuing endeavor, despite the dissolution of the CEC. So thank you for getting that together.
Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to look back to the effort to help one of our businesses stay in town. You know, these are the type of things, they're not big news, they don't want to have headlines, but I think the last half decade has become very clear to this staff, this council, this city, that we want to really work hard to help our business community, especially in these financial times. And I just want you to know, I appreciate the extra effort that goes out. There's a lot of things like this that go on every day, and I bet we don't hear about a lot of them, but this is a good example of what you do, so thank everybody on the team.
Okay, and Mr. Beric, I think you wanted a comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, thank you. Regarding the city manager's report, as you well know, if history is any guide, there's no guarantee that the cycle shop is gonna stay at that location. Okay? So it's very nice to bring good news here, but we know that business is very fickle. Business owners come and go, they get ill, they get divorced, their business goes down, they're hit with sales taxes and so forth, so there's no guarantee that they're going to stay there. And if any of you have ever spoken to the owners, as I have at length, they have often complained that they are not doing well in Kattati. Rarely do they take a paycheck. They've struggled for years. They've tried their very best to put out a good product and give good service, and I've had my bicycle serviced there as well, but they're struggling. And I think that they had no option, really, than to move across the street. And I would take exception to the city taking very much credit at all for that business staying, because I still think it's a work in progress, and we want to wish them the best. Also, regarding sharing services with Sebastopol, city manager said, you know, a good faith effort to share resources and so forth. About a month ago, Joan Simon came before here, us, and gave us three minutes of her stellar resume about how successful she was, until the red light went off. So she claims to be very, very successful in what she does. I didn't make it up on my own, it's on public record, for you all to listen to once again, if you could stomach through it. Maybe we can donate her services over there too, as well. Maybe give her a little call. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. All right, now we're gonna move on to, oh, no, we have one more comment. Yes, Mr. Hancock, sorry. I should look up more often.
Yes, good evening, Council. I talked with Chaz and with Claire, and while they were looking at, looking at a new place there and was, you know, seeing what was happening, they worked very hard over Christmas to actually get the process moved across the road with the two, the two businesses, I mean, with the business closing one side and being able to open it seamlessly. And I was very surprised, because I thought they were gone. They were looking at somewhere in Pangrove, Pangrove was being very, very attractive, and then they moved across the road. I thought it was fantastic. So, you know, I think that's what it takes to try and work with businesses in town, and they certainly appreciate it when they can get some insights as to the government processes and speedy, you know, just facilitating that they can do the hard work to actually make it happen. So I thought it was just amazing that they stayed.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else on the city manager's report? All right, so no one, I'll go ahead and enclose that public hearing, and we will move on to city council reports. I'm looking right, and we'll start with Councilmember Moore.
Just a couple things. I had some, some local residents that approached the city about moving a business over into the west side, over in the industrial area, and that was Mike and Tina Frasana, and they were assisted greatly by the planning department and Micah Hinkle. And it appears they've signed a lease, and it looks like they'll be getting a business going, and provided they get the conditional use permit through planning, which I think is scheduled for the next meeting, or may be scheduled for the next planning meeting. And so they were all accolades regarding city staff and what they did to help them facilitate that in such a short period of time. So I thought that was very positive. Regarding Tubby's Restaurant, and it's too bad Mr. Beric isn't here, Tubby's Restaurant moved because of the exorbitant rents at Sun Hill property, and moved to Rona Park because their rent was more than 50% less than Sun Hill. And they've been doing very well, they did bring some of their clientele with them, but had it not been for the landlords, they would have tried to stay in Kattati, because they did prefer it, but they, there was no working with the landlord, so. And the city did reach out to try to assist them in what they could do to try to facilitate staying, but that was not successful. And by the way, they were not scared off by taxes, sales tax. And then I was just gonna report that I will be assisting on Sunday with the Historical Society BBQ, and Thursday, I'll be going to my first board meeting with REMF. And that's it.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Just a couple of quick items. One, I wanted to point out a couple of facts about the economic impacts of childcare in Sonoma County. I was just taken back by some of these numbers, so I thought I would share them with you. Childcare has a $214 million impact on Sonoma County's economy. People may not realize that, but it's really significant. And there are, in Sonoma County, almost 23,000 children under the age of six that have all their parents in the labor force, and more than 30,000 children between the ages of six and 12 that have working parents. And this is important, because lack of childcare is by far the most frequent barrier to employment. So it's really very important that we have appropriate childcare for our children. But I just, some of those numbers were just kind of slapped me in the face, and I just thought I would share those with you. And then the other thing is, as I was at the Water Advisory Committee meeting, and the 2014-15 budget was approved, and I just wanted to give a small update on the water. You know, we did have a little bit of rain, but while it helped us a little bit, it did not get us, didn't get us out of the, out of the woods there. Mendocino is at 52%, and Sonoma's at 74%. The good news is, is I guess Lake Pillsbury has some water spilling, which is great news, but again, as a 4-1, we're still considered being in a dry condition, so we're not there. And to those efforts, they're having what they're calling a drought drive-up. I will probably ask the city manager, since we have one more meeting before the drought drive-up event, which is April 23rd, to kind of get the information on our announcements, that would be helpful. But it's all day from 7:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. It's free, and basically you can build your own custom drought toolkit. There's aerators, and dye tablets, and shower timers, and shower buckets, and showerheads, and conservation tip cards. And I think for us, the closest location is probably Rona Park, there's not one specifically in Kattati, but there'll be one at Rona Park at the Ashley Furniture Parking Lot, and you just kind of drive up and build your own little kit, and that's all I have to report. It is Wednesday, April 23rd, from 7:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., and you just kind of show up.
Do you know if those shower timers are teen-proof?
Is anything teen-proof? I can recall that when I had teenagers at home, I laughed before they handed out these little cards when they were talking about it. You know, I kind of was talking with Damien, and I says, oh yeah, when my, when my kids were teenagers, I used to have a timer there, and so, lo and behold, the guy hands out these little cards, and I go, ah, shower timers, there we go.
I think one of the more successful tips is knowing how to time turning on hot water somewhere else in the house, so the shower water instantly turns ice cold. It's a great incentive. Councilmember Landman? You were done, I hope.
Yes.
In an effort to even the cosmic scale, so speaking time tonight, I'm gonna tell you, I have nothing actually to report. Not a lot of action in any of my committees, nothing certainly worth a big interest to bring back to the council right now. So we'll see next meeting, I'm sure there'll be a few things by then.
All right, thanks. Vice Mayor Skilman.
I also have nothing to report out.
Great, because I can make up for the two of you combined plus for me. So beautiful. Sit still. This is not going anywhere. Only because we missed our 3:25 meeting, just as a recap, I want to be clear on, since I am the stain on our town, as was referenced earlier in this meeting, I just want to say that this stain has been quite active the last couple of weeks. On March 15th, I met with the Santero Way HOA, and brought back that information to the city manager and the chief about the biggest concerns they had. They came to us about a year ago, I think it was, talking about the on-street parking issue and how difficult that is. So we went over that at some length, and also speeding. Speeding's been an issue there, I know we've had the machine out there that puts up the numbers, and, you know, Murphy's Law, it was classic, so here the mayor is standing on the sidewalk for an hour and 20 minutes, talking to their HOA, and not one person sped by, and they were all college-age people that were driving by painfully slow. It was just so amazing. The HOA was just, they were hysterical over it, they couldn't believe it, until finally a representative of a business on that road came speeding by at an incredible clip, not only with this large vehicle, but pulling it under the vehicle behind it, we'll just leave it at that. So he got the evil eye from me, and it was, I got him to at least touch his brakes, I thought that was helpful. On the 27th of March, we had an Ag and Open Space District meeting, and you're so lucky, because I left all of my notes at home, so I will take a pass. I was asked by the director to make a presentation on, there was a recent report that came out about a month ago now, on, and it was specific to national parks, but I said, this is really, it's applicable to any open space kind of area, the economic benefits of these public open spaces to local businesses. And it was a study done on 2012 statistics, and it showed, for example, that the park I work at generated $98 million in the local economy and 1,100 jobs in that particular year. And it's based on these formulas from Michigan State University, and they have it all calculated out, and it was pretty impressive. I think people now realize there's these benefits to parks and open spaces for your health, for your mental health, your physical health, and we also have these economic benefits. And honestly, there's a lot of studies out there that show the value of your property, your personal property, also goes up where these places are in and around you. So it was an interesting, so I just gave a 15-minute presentation there. I attended on March 31st, the Bike and Pedestrian Plan here. I attended on March 31st the bike and pedestrian plan here, which I missed the last 20 minutes or so. So I hope that the priorities were done in accordance to my wishes, but of course, because I didn't make those public, I don't know what they were, so. But the process was going great. Vicki ran that meeting. And yesterday, amazing, we had the library JPA meeting, our final meeting. And it will be coming back to the council, I believe, on the May 13th agenda, so a couple of meetings out. And the timeline, which I didn't bring, but the timeline has to be that all of the jurisdictions, so the nine cities and the county, have to ratify and approve the JPA, and it looks like we all will. The concession, just so you know that you gave me some liberty, was, you know, is Santa Rosa going to have two commissioners, and the county going to have two commissioners? Or are we going to stick to 1-1? Which I was pretty vehement about 1-1, thinking everything was equitable. It turns out, the compromise that was reached was Santa Rosa will have one, the county will have one, then there'll be a hybrid position that the two will have to agree on for one other person that'll be representing, they have to live within the county, but they don't necessarily represent. That was the best we could come up with.
Is it somebody picked by board supervisors in Santa Rosa?
They're going to be picked by the, the board chair and the mayor of Santa Rosa, and they have to agree on one, this one individual. So that was the best we could do. And to show you what level of sophistication, the last item that we did was to decide which jurisdiction has a four-year term or a two-year term. And there was a bag that Supervisor McGuire was walking around, and you had to pick out a chocolate bar. And the chocolate bar that had a gold coin in it got the four-year term. And I didn't pick that, but the dark chocolate was good. That's all that really matters. So Kattati will have a two-year term this first round. And I believe those appointments, I think, have to be made by some date in July. I want to say mid-July at the latest. So we'll be getting information from the county on what that process is and how to sort of advertise that. And again, it'll be a two-year term, so.
Upon ratification of the JPA, the appointment.
Yes, and I cannot make any assumptions that it will be ratified. However, it should be ratified. In fact, this next week, it's going to the Board of Supervisors in the city of Petaluma, so they'll be the first ones. I don't think there's going to be any sticking points, because all of the representatives came back saying, we've vetted this through our councils, and everybody's in agreement. So, so this should pass, but we'll see.
Were there any Oompa Loompas involved?
No Oompa Loompas.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah. Although Mike could be, well, no, let's not go, this is being recorded. All right, do we have any other reports from anyone?
Can I make one more comment? I wanted to make a comment about the plastic bag ban. I think people saw in the paper that Oliver's chose to implement the bag ban on the first day that it went into effect. And late in the afternoon, it was probably about 5-ish, I happened to be in Oliver's. And there was quite a long line of people, everybody was talking about it, you know, and that whole bag thing. And the checker that was there, he had worked all day, he had, he had been there. And he said, you know, God, he goes, I got up this morning, and he goes, I dreaded coming in, not because I didn't want to be here, he says, but, you know, with change, you know, everybody, he goes, I thought everybody was going to come in and, you know, be really angry with me and all that. And he said, all day long, and, and you know how busy, all of you know how busy Oliver's is, all day long, he only had one individual in his line that got upset about, about the bag stuff. Everybody else was just really happy about it, or, and/or kind of made them step back and think, you know, about what it is that they wanted to do. And he said, like, a lot of people just walked out, you know, they had one item, and they walked out with that one item, rather than, you know, do a bag. But they, but they also did something a little bit different for little tiny items, as they had, not the big bags.
Skinny one.
Skinny little bag to put in, you know, like, single items. But I thought that was pretty creative. But I just wanted to report that, because only here, you know, here in Kattati. But they kind of stepped forward, and it wasn't that bad.
And they're not charging for those small bags?
No.
Is what I've heard, too.
That's correct.
When I asked, when I asked the other night.
That's correct.
Not that I needed to use one, but I just asked.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we will adjourn.